Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. The Planning Commission is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We are live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Flengus?
Here.
Vice Chair Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Goins?
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Present.
Commissioner Quinn, excused. Commissioner Schlotman?
Present.
Commissioner Bonar, excused as well.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available to help. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate it very much, you adhering to these rules so that our meeting can run smoothly. Thank you. We'll go on to item number four, which says, "Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time, any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items." Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Sir, if you could state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name's Chichi Bengachia, 1335 Rosanna, and we would like item 10 pulled from the consent agenda, if possible.
Certainly, we'll do it when we get to that portion right there. So we'll go ahead and pull it when we get there.
Okay.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number five. This is to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of July 8, 2014. Commissioner Moody, could you please make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My motion is to approve the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of July 8, 2014, and August 12, 2014.
Just the meeting of July 8, 2014, Commissioner Moody? If you could amend your motion?
Yeah, amended to approve only the minutes for July 8, 2014.
Thank you. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, in reviewing the minutes, it looked like the city clerk's office had a question about one of the motions, it was, or one of the added conditions that was made. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was actually given to them before a vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of July 8, 2014 carries. Go on to the next item regarding abeyance of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of August 12, 2014. Commissioner Moody, would you please make a motion pertaining to that?
My motion is to obey the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of August 12, 2014.
Mr. Chairman, I abstain since I was not at that meeting.
Thank you. The motion to obey the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of August 12, 2014 carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale. We'll now go on to the housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action? Noting that Mr. Bengachia, a little while ago, wanted to pull item number 10. Are there anybody else which to pull any items at this juncture? Seeing none, I'll move on to the next portion.
Mr. Chairman, for housekeeping items?
Sure.
Correct.
I apologize, you gotta get yours in, too.
Mr. Chairman, the following items have been requested to be tabled. Item number 41, TXT 54945, and the following item has been requested to be stricken, item number 39, TXT 54664. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of those two items? Seeing none, I will close it for public comment. I'll entertain a motion amongst the commissioners.
Mr. Chair, the motion is to strike item 39 and table item 41.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion carries. We'll now go on to the one-motion-one-vote portion of the agenda. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public-hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Beginning with related items number seven and number eight. Number seven is SUP 55212. The applicant is Tenea Creek Brewery. The owner is Rank Brewing LLC. For possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a proposed 1,877-square-foot beer-wine cooler, on-sale establishment within a proposed 13,170-square-foot manufacturing-heavy-use brewery at 831 West Bonanza Road in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number eight, SUP 55214, for possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a proposed 1,877-square-foot beer-wine cooler, off-sale establishment within a proposed 13,170-square-foot manufacturing-heavy-use brewery. Staff is recommending approval. Item number nine is SUP 54967. The applicant is Smash Burger Acquisitions Las Vegas LLC. The owner is National Solutions LLC. For possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a proposed beer-wine cooler, on-sale establishment within an existing 1,886-square-foot restaurant at 6300 West Charleston Boulevard, Suite 170 in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 11 is SUP 55200. The applicant is Yohi Japanese Fondue, owner 9440 West Sahara Holdings LLC. For possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a proposed 1,575-square-foot beer-wine cooler, on-sale establishment with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a house of worship where 400 feet is required at 9440 West Sahara, Suite 175 in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 12 is SUP 55235. The applicant-owner is Target Corporation. For possible action on a request for a special-use permit for an accessory packaged liquor, off-sale use within an existing 135,000-square-foot general retail establishment at 8750 West Charleston Boulevard in Ward 2, Councilman Beers. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 13 is SUP 55239. The applicant-owner is Target Corporation. For possible action on a request for a special-use permit for an accessory packaged liquor, off-sale use within an existing 131,810-square-foot general retail establishment at 6371 North Decatur Boulevard in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Item number 14 is SUP 55245. The applicant-owner is Target Corporation. For possible action on a request for a special-use permit for an accessory packaged liquor, off-sale use within an existing 132,281-square-foot general retail establishment at 3210 North Tenea Way in Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending approval. Final item on the one-motion-one vote is item number 15, which is VAC 55329. The applicant-owner is Summit Cheyenne LLC. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate Bureau of Land Management Patent Easements generally located at 10302 West Cheyenne Avenue, Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Staff is recommending approval. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Please come forward, sir. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Curtis Williams. I live at 705.
Could you please come up to the mic?
Yeah, I'm new here.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Curtis Williams. I live at 705 West Washington. I was wondering, like, when they, if they come and build this right here, this is gonna, like, smell? I mean, the business is gonna be good for a property, for the city, but if it's gonna smell, it's gonna mess up pretty much. And no matter how long it takes for you to build this, or when you do build it, it's gonna smell.
Okay, sir, are you, are you asking to have this matter pulled for a public hearing?
No, I'm asking you to look into it more to make sure that what they're building there is gonna be good for where I'm living at.
Well, I just can't answer that question right now. If you want to pull it for a public hearing, and then we can question the applicant for your concern. So if you want to pull it, I will take it off the one-motion-one vote calendar, and then we'll hear it, and the applicant can give us a briefing, and you can ask questions at that juncture, if that's what you want to do.
I'm asking, but all I'm, okay. I don't want to interfere, and I don't want to interrupt, but what I want to know is, is it gonna be harmful for where I'm living at? That's my question.
I'm gonna go ahead and pull the items number seven and the related item number eight for a public hearing. Okay? And then I'll let you come up in a little while and talk about it again, Mr. Green.
Williams.
What's that?
Williams, sir.
Williams, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
It's my mistake. I apologize on your name. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Ma'am, if you'll come forward and please give us your name and address. You're gonna have to come up to the mic.
My name is Julia Quo. I am a property owner for 6763 West Charleston.
Ma'am, which item?
Item 10. Item 10 for the funeral home.
Okay, that matter's already been pulled, ma'am. We're gonna have a public hearing on that in a little bit.
And I fixed some papers today.
I understand.
And I have more.
We pulled that right now. It's gonna be heard on a public hearing in about five minutes. You can come back up at that juncture and talk about item 10.
Okay, so these papers don't need to give to the committee?
No, you'll give them to me when we call that item. That item's not in front of us right now. I will call it in a little while, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on any of these matters? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chair, my motion is to approve item 9 and items 11 through 15 on the one-motion-one-vote portion of tonight's calendar.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, motion to approve item 9 and items 11 through 15 carries.
Mr. Chairman, item 11 will go to City Council on October 15, 2014. Items 9, 12, 13, 14, and 15 are final action unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 days.
Thank you, Director. Okay, going back now, we're gonna open up the public hearing items. We'll begin with related items number seven and number eight. Item number seven is SUP 55212. The applicant is Tenea Creek Brewery. The owner is Rank Brewing LLC. For possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a proposed 1,877-square-foot beer-wine cooler, on-sale establishment within a proposed 13,170-square-foot manufacturing-heavy-use brewery at 831 West Bonanza Road in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Related item number eight is SUP 55214. For possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a proposed 1,877-square-foot beer-wine cooler, off-sale establishment within a proposed 13,170-square-foot manufacturing-heavy-use brewery. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting approval to serve beer and sell beer within a portion of a proposed brewery at 831 West Bonanza Road. This use meets all the minimum Title 19 requirements for the on-sale and the off-sale establishment uses. Both requests' uses are compatible with the existing and future land uses. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of their requested special-use permit with conditions. If denied, no alcohol may be served on the premises. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we go hear from the applicant, can staff tell, we're here talking about the, just the on-sale or the off-sale of beer and alcohol, not, not the production facility, right?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That is, that is correct. It's only about the on-sale and off-sale. The actual heavy manufacturing, AKA the brewery, has a permitted use in the M zoning district. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. If you could give us your names and addresses, please?
Christina Rousch with Tenea Creek, 3101 North Tenea.
And Tim Eder with Tenea Creek, 3101 Tenea.
Thank you. I believe there was a question from that gentleman. If you could address that, and we can probably move on with a vote. Mr. Williams, please come on up.
Excuse me, I don't mean to cause harm. It might be, uh, it might be, uh, have making jobs, right?
Sir, I need you to speak into the mic and...
I'm kinda new at this.
Sir, I need you to address us.
Speak to him. He'll speak to them.
Okay, I'm kinda new at this.
No, I understand.
And I'm kinda nervous.
Just relax, we're easy.
Okay, my question is, like, what kind of harm is it gonna cause? Even though it might bring jobs and stuff, you know, for people that need it. But you think about, is it gonna pollute? Would the wind bring it down town? You know? You have to think on that little, how long is it gonna, how long would it take before it started messing up the area? You know? I don't, I mean, business and stuff is good, but is it gonna pollute? Even though you may put filters in there, but if it's polluted, it's gonna, it's gonna trap them. I mean, it's good to have a business to come into the area because we really need it, but it is an industrial area, that's not really an industrial area right there, not yet anyway. In fact, my home is there, and other people's, too. So if you move in right now, and you build whatever kind of bacteria, whatever smell that it gives off, it's gonna affect me. I'm not saying, uh, don't do this. I'm asking you, like, if it's good for, if it's gonna help you, good, but if it's gonna hit, and once you put it down on Bonanza, it's gonna spread if it smells. If it does. I'm not saying, you say this is a heavy industrial area, but if it smells, it's gonna affect us. But if it's not gonna affect us in any, in any kind of way, I'm, by all means, go ahead on with it.
Tim will explain.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams. Would y'all like to address this question real quick?
Yeah, if I understand the concern correctly, it's about the, the discharge or the exhaust or, you know, the, from the, from the production.
Yeah.
I believe that we're in a heavy-use or manufacturing zoning. So the, the exhaust or the discharge or anything is, is not anything more than what we're doing right now in a, a non-industrial zone. We're currently in production up on Tenea and Cheyenne, across the street from the hospital. And we've been so for the past 15 years. So it really hasn't been too much of a problem for that neighborhood.
It's vapor, no?
It's, it's vapor anyway, so it's not really that much of an odor or, you know, smoke or pollution.
Okay, thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. If you look at the existing Tenea Creek, as the applicant says, it's in a residential business park on the edge of a flood channel and park. So there's, there's a lot of people there, and we, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any complaints of odors or other such. There are similar uses along Paradise and business parks, right adjacent to housing. This being an M or a heavy industrial zone and an approved use, I think, I think this is the appropriate spot for this. With regards to the off-sale use, I think that's a great ancillary use for the business, and I don't think it would create any greater impact on the area or not. If there are no other questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Schlotman, I think you had some comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I didn't realize that a beer-wine cooler on-sale establishment was allowed in conjunction with a brewery. That's news to me. Maybe it's been that away forever, but actually, could I ask staff to comment on that?
Well, previously, it was not permitted. You had to have a tavern license along with the microbrewery. The city has since amended the code, both the licensing code and the zoning code, in order to allow breweries to offer the sale without being a full tavern. So we have made changes. We did that two years ago in order to expand that, to allow for these types of uses to occur within the city of Las Vegas and encourage them to grow.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman, one more question for the applicant.
Thank, Commissioner Schlotman, go ahead.
One more question. In looking at the staff's report, you are requesting to keep the razor wire perimeter, and we never allow that. What's the justification for keeping razor wire around this property?
Frankly, to keep vagrants out of the back end of the property. We can either put a further chain link, not chain link, a wrought iron fence with vertical penetrations, or we can keep the chain link and razor wire that's gonna be around the perimeter on the backside only. We're putting in decorative wrought iron on the front, so we're enhancing quite considerably the frontage, which is our longest, longest fencing run that we need to do. But the existing chain link and razor wire abuts the freeway and the drainage channel there. And there's, frankly, a lot of people that pass through there and live under there, and we've already got security in place and had people trying to climb the fence repeatedly. So it is an issue in that location.
And, Ms. Chairman, a question for staff through you.
Sir, Mike.
I have one question, please.
Sorry, it's just for the commissioners to speak right now, Mr. Williams. Thank you.
All right. Is this not a waiver due to us not having SDR in front of us, or what? Could you comment on that a little further?
All right, Mr. Chairman, through you. As is an existing condition, the chain link is, and chain link and razor wire pre-existed the requirement for a site plan review, and it was a permitted substance, material previously when this was originally built many years ago. And since they're not making any site changes specific to that area, they, they're entitled to have the chain link and the razor wire, and no site plan review with a waiver is required.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Truesdale, entertain a motion.
Now, Ms. Chairman, I think this is a major investment to this area and will prove to be a huge enhancement to the area over time and bring other businesses there. So I will make a motion on SUP 55212 to follow staff recommendations for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number seven carries.
Item eight, SUP, all right, SUP 55214.
I'm not against it. I'm for it, as long as it's good.
Move for follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Motion to approve item number eight carries.
Mr. Chairman, items seven and eight will be heard at City Council meeting on October 15, 2014.
Thank you, Director. We'll move on now to pulled item number 10, which is SUP 55195. The applicant is Davis Funeral Home and Memorial Park. The owner is Hart Voland Enterprises LLC. For possible action on a request for a special-use permit for a proposed mortuary or funeral chapel use at 1401 South Rainbow Boulevard in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use meets all Title 1912 requirements for a mortuary or funeral chapel use and is compatible with the residential, retail, and office uses in the surrounding area. Additionally, this request does not include a crematory, as is, it is not a permitted use within the subject zoning district. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested special-use permit with conditions. If denied, the building will have to be utilized for another use. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Jennifer Lazovich, 8345 West Sunset Road, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. If you can look at the overhead that I have on the dais, please? Thank you. As I indicated, we are representing Davis Funeral Home tonight. Davis has a current operation that has been there for about 20 years on Charleston between Rancho and Valley View, which backs up immediately to some residential property, more commonly known as the Scotch 80s. They have been in that location for about 20 years with absolutely no code enforcement violations or any other issues. However, their lease is coming up to, for expiration, and they are looking to stay in the general vicinity, but this time by a building, so they don't have to continue looking for someplace when their lease expires. The property that is before you tonight is right here. It sits on the corner of Rainbow and Delray. And for those of you who have been in Las Vegas a long time, you will know this site originally as the Old Country Inn for breakfast, which was great. And then, when that went away, Memphis BBQ came in and had it for a number of years, and it's been sitting now vacant for about two years. So that's the site that we're talking about tonight. Again, it is in this location. It is Zone C1, and if you've been by the site, you know that, right now, it is painted a kind of reddish color. With our elevations, we're looking to perhaps tone that down a little bit more, stick with the brick elements and some light gray, but obviously make it look a little bit more like a home, which we think is compatible with the residential homes as you transition west on Delray. Your staff mentioned it, but I think it's important for me to start with and state very clearly what this is not. This is not, under any set of circumstances, going to be a crematorium, and it is obviously not going to be a cemetery. But what we are asking to do is to hold funeral services there. That's, again, what they've been doing on West Charleston for quite some time. In terms of usage, what we believe that this facility will have is five, maybe seven to 10 services per week, okay? We actually think that that could be more closer to the five, but just to give you an idea, we think it could be between five and 10 services per week. Services typically last about 50 minutes to an hour, and obviously, it's used when it needs to be used, and if it doesn't need to be used, then you don't have any activity on the site at all, other than just some light employees. We did do a voluntary neighborhood meeting. We did that back on August 19, Monday, August 19. We had about eight people attend that meeting. You can see in your staff report, there were some concerns raised regarding traffic, just some concerns raised to the use itself. And I do want to raise another point that was brought up to me tonight, and you will hear from some neighbors who I just had an opportunity to talk to tonight, but unfortunately, they weren't able to come to the meeting. So they've just found out about this, and I respect their position on, on why they'd like to have some more time to sit down and learn about the use. As it relates specifically to the traffic, as I mentioned, and I keep going back to this, on our facility that, at our facility that we've been located at on Charleston for the last 20 years, Charleston is a very, very, very busy street, and we have never had an issue with traffic. And what do I mean by that? We've never had a traffic accident in front of our site because of people either coming or going. And on the rare occasions where we have had a funeral processional, Davis has worked with a company that is licensed here in Nevada to help guide traffic so that we don't have any issues. What we find in today's funeral... What we find in today's funeral services arena, there's not quite as much of a need, for whatever the reason, for processinals. However, on the rare occasion where there is a request for a processional, we do have that covered in terms of hiring a company that will manage the traffic flow coming out of there. The same thing would happen at this location. We would never, under any set of circumstances, direct traffic coming out for a processional or otherwise onto Delray. It would go out onto Rainbow, just as we utilize Charleston for our exit, our entrance and exit at our current location. In terms of parking, the current restaurant, we have 95 spaces that are there today. We also have four additional handicap spaces. That's obviously parked to what a restaurant supper club would need. As you might note in your staff report, this type of use requires by code, much less. It requires only 14 spaces by your code. Again, we think that with the spaces that we're having, which is 90, almost 100 spaces, almost 100 spaces, that that will more than cover the parking on-site. If we get into a situation where we know, and we do know ahead of time, if we're going to have services on the rare occasion, and we've experienced this at the Charleston location, where we may need more than the parking that is required there, what we do is we again, bring someone who is, has experience in this area, and they are on-site, and they park the cars on-site in a way that allows us, just for the purposes of that service, to perhaps get in a few more cars, but all done on-site. The concern raised by the neighbors, and they will talk to you about this, is that there could be parking up and down Delray. That is an absolute legitimate concern, and we would do whatever it took to make sure that that would not happen. We do not want anybody parking up and down Delray. We don't believe they need to park up and down Delray because we can handle that completely on our side. Staying for a moment on some of the neighbors who will talk tonight, what they've asked for, and I respect and I wish that I could grant it, I think you all know me as I stand up here, that if I am in a situation to hold an item, to work more with neighbors, I will always do it. What they have asked is that we hold the item so that I can meet with those neighbors. And they're right. I want to meet with them. I want to bring Davis Funeral Home into that meeting. They live right behind us. They live to the west of us. So, we want to meet with the people who are closest to us. But, what we would ask the commission to consider is that we go up to City Council, that would be 30 days from now, on October 15th, and in between tonight's meeting and October 15th, we will have as many neighborhood meetings as the people that are right behind us want to have. I do think you'll hear from some other people, I recognize them here tonight, who were at my neighborhood meeting, who may not be supportive of the use. That's something unfortunately, I can't change. But, to the degree that I can work with neighbors who have concerns about parking or anything that deals with the operations of the site, I want to sit down, I want to try to work with them. I'll give you my word, I'll give it to them, I'm giving it to you on the record, that we would absolutely do that and meet with them and try to address any concerns that they have about the operational nature. We appreciate staff's recommendation of approval, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? So, please come forward. And please note, we do have three mics here, so I got a feeling we're going to have quite a few people speaking tonight. And so, if you could kind of start lining up behind the respective mics, I would appreciate it. Also, if it starts getting a little bit lengthy on the remarks, I'm going to limit it to about three minutes. It appears we do have quite a few folks. So, ma'am, it looks like you're first. Come on forward and give your name and address, please.
My name is Julia, last name K U O. I actually get the body process, the property owner and business.
I need you to give me your address, if you don't mind.
Oh, yes. 6763 West Charleston.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
I have more signature from the people against this project, and we have some reason. I heard the lady was talking about she were taking care about the trophy, but it's not the only reason we against this special permit being issued to them, because on the public record, you can see it on the Google, just go to search it, they say the property value, especially the residential property value, will drop down at least 15 percent. And my recommendation is more than that, because I'm a Realtor. And so, this is one of the reason. And second reason is within less than one mile, just very close, on the Oaky and Jones, the Ponds Mercury already there. They do the combination, they do everything. So, within such short distance, we do not think we need another funeral service in the area. And I've been personally spoke to, like I gather so many, I spoke to business owner and the property owner, they, a lot of them told me, we don't need the funeral service here. We do need the retail or the restaurant. We knew it, that was vacant for two years because the market, the whole market was dropped down. It's just getting better from this year. So, even there was been vacant for a while, but I do believe there were some other people where do the similar business like a restaurant or other people to service the neighborhood, not this service. So, the third reason, and that reason is, the other lady just mentioned about the traffic count, I want to tell her, tell everybody, the traffic count nearby the Rancho and the West Charleston, on the record, it was showing 47,000 the car. But, on the Charleston and the South Rainbow and much more, it's 95,000 plus, it's just the one long block to the I-95. That is a lot of people was concerned about they will bring more traffic. So, that's why we against, we don't want this permit being issued to them. And I knew they are in Esco. If this permit being issued to them, they were going to have a closing soon. And we strongly against it. We just don't want the funeral service again. And you know, within the short distance, Oaky and Jones, I think it's probably like a point five or point seven miles, very short distance.
Thank you, ma'am. Just real quick, I couldn't quite understand your first part of your comment. Do you own a business on Charleston, or is your residence on Charleston?
My business, and I own the commercial property.
And it's called Moore?
My son is there too. Okay, my son, our family, we own the, our residence is just on the Oaky and Rainbow.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the speaker mentioned an effect to land values. Does she have a copy of the study or?
I can print out, but I don't have, I only have the signature from all the owners.
No, no, I meant a copy of whatever report from the appraisers or Realtors that specifies the value?
Okay, the other day, a lady, I don't have right now. We can get it for you if you think it is helpful. I can get it for you. I can go online to get it for you.
Okay. May I be also mentioned, you had a page with signatures on it. Would you like to give it to the clerk so we can put it into the record?
Yes, I have original. I was fix some this morning, and I have more. Those are original. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next?
Chi Chi Bingachi, 1335 Rosanna. I have four other property owners that have, there's 11 houses that surround this property on Rosanna. There's, and Rosanna continues into a cul-de-sac, and then there's Bailey. We would like to see, if we can, and I understand Jennifer's situation, but what I would like to see is, if we can, is hold this for 30 days. And I would be willing to hold a neighborhood meeting for the neighbors that are directly impacted by this use, so we can meet the Davis people and discuss what all their concerns are. You know, we have concerns on the parking on Delray, you know, parking, I realize that, you know, Memphis BBQ had a big lot, but those services go, they get a lot of people. And people are going to park where the most convenient place to park and not, no offense to Davis or anybody else, is just keeping people from parking up and down Delray. You know, they're going to have service, you know, their hours of operation are from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So, it's like, you know, it's an all-day affair. I understand how many funerals depending on business. So, you know, we're going to, every time we come home, we got to drive by it, you know, and see it. So, we just need to keep it under control somehow, screening or something, issues that we need to talk about. You know, the perception about the property values, that everybody has an opinion of what property values should or should not be. And I don't think it's anybody's place to sit here and tell we need a study to prove it up. I mean, we've all suffered greatly property values in our, in that section, you know, with short sales and foreclosures and everything else. And you know, the perception is a perception, and everybody has a right to have that. And so, I, you know, I agree with the previous person, it could be an issue. I don't know. Somebody comes, if I ever sold my house, you know, they might not want to buy my house. But, I've been there for 20 years in that neighborhood, spent a lot of money living in that neighborhood and protected everybody's, you know, I've met with several future proposed developments in the neighborhood, and we've always had good conversation. You know, in this case, we, the notice didn't happen. I mean, it might have, but it wasn't, it wasn't really, you know, well-searched out for the adjoining property. And I told her, I said that we need to talk, and that's what I'd like. I'm really concerned about putting it up for a vote for several reasons. One, you know, Mrs. Quinn's not here, it's her, it's their ward, Lois Tarkanian's ward, she's our rep. Mr. Bonar's not here, you know, I'm afraid that if you put it up for vote and you do agree to, you know, prove it based on your, the information that's out here today, it's not going to allow the neighborhood to properly represent themselves. They're not going to want to come to the neighborhood meeting because it's already perceived that it's approved. They don't understand the 30-day, you know, the process. I understand the process, but not all the neighbors understand the process. And we're going to appeal it regardless, but I think the best thing to do is to hold it 30 days for us and then give us a chance to talk about it. You know, the property seller is in our ward. If anybody's impacted, it's him. If he doesn't want to sell it, he doesn't want to sell it. That's his choice. We're not there to sit there and open ourselves up to an issue that we don't know exactly what they're going to do, you know, how they're going to operate it. I understand they've been around a long time, but I really think that we need to sit down and a commitment, and so, my neighbors, don't get mad at me when it happens and the traffic gets bad, and they come up and say, why'd you allow it to happen? Because they're asking me to come up here and represent them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Please come on up. If you could state your name and address, please.
Tina Campbell, 1331 and 1321 South Rainbow. I am the property manager and represent Rio Blanco Ranch. We have two buildings that are actually in the same parking lot as the proposed funeral home, and they are used for medical purposes. I have letters from two of the doctors that are currently operating in those buildings. We are in 100% opposition of this due to the fact that we share the same parking lot. It could interfere with emergency access if there were a medical emergency in one of our buildings for one of the doctors. Another reason, and I have letters if you'd like them, from two of the doctors that occupy this space. The building was originally constructed by Dr. Anthony Pollard and bought by my owners in 2004, and has been primarily used for medical services, which is in direct opposition of a funeral home and would create a very negative situation for these doctors to continue in a medical practice. The traffic is something that is just already a problem. I've been on-site at the property since 2004, and if an emergency service needed to happen at the property and there was a funeral concession going on, it could interfere with someone's life. We are in direct opposition of this and would greatly appreciate your reconsideration for this use.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Any of the commissioners wish to be heard? Mr. Goines?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Goines, excuse me.
Good, good. Well, I think at this juncture, I think we've heard from the neighbors. I know this was on the one motion, one vote. I know it was approved through staff, which thoroughly vetted it. I knew there was a couple of issues about parking, but I think we got through that. I think there's over 111 parking spaces on this. Then again, it comes down to just basically, here we have neighbors that have come in and are concerned about, number one, their quality of life, number two, their property But, we're a land use board, and so, we're looking at, is this the proper use of a use on a parcel? And one thing I know, it's a special use. And so, when it becomes a special use, it's one of those that brings attention to all the area. We have neighbors out here, we have neighbors with legitimate concerns. We have neighbors that, for whatever reason, we're not at a neighborhood meeting. Maybe one neighborhood meeting's not enough to vet this, but I think, as I have done over the years, is I listen to the neighbors. I truly believe that if you have to walk out your door and look at something, you should have a say-so to the stake in the neighborhood, especially the one that you've put roots down in excess of 10, 15, even 20 years. And so, we're at that point now, but I understand the applicant's point as well. And it, you know, I have to look at it for the merit of what it is, and it's a land use decision. And I want neighbors to have the confidence that when they come to us, that we listen to them and grant them their wishes. I'm of the favor of holding the item and letting it have the neighborhood meeting and vetting as many meetings as need be between now and City Council. I think that's the only thing that's right. I understand the applicant's position too, and it's a tough position. But, at the end of the day, it's the neighbors that count to me. It's their livelihood, it's their quality of life that I think I've been beholden to make sure that they get that. And so, that's my opinion on it, and that's the way I feel, and I'll listen to my other commissioners.
Commissioner Modi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this is an interesting item. We're not only weighing quality of life, but also death in this situation. And with that in mind, I read through the staff report carefully, and I agree with staff in this situation. This is a proposed plan that is compatible with surrounding land uses. It's a building that is suitable for this type of business. There's good access to it, and it would not be inconsistent with public health, safety, or welfare based on what I'm hearing from staff report. It complies with Title 19, and for those reasons, and I've listened to the neighbors, my vote, if we have an up-down vote, would be to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I knew that Commissioner Quinn was not going to be here this evening and reached out to her and see if she had any contact with neighbors, just to see if there needed to be anything put on the record, and she hadn't. So, I- So I, if something's happened later this afternoon since I spoke to her, I just wanted to bring that forward. I understand the neighbors. This has always been a, you've got great residents to the west of there, and yet this is one of the busiest arterials in the valley along Rainbow. I spent last week in the Midwest in a town that I think is probably one of the most pristine places, and there are funeral homes of this character, not super funeral, you know, not major facilities, but they're on major corners on Main Street. They're in edges of residential area, and they're part of the community. I'd like to see, I'd like to say that we can outrun this, but it is a reality. The facility, this isn't a new player to town. They've been here almost 30 years, I think, or 25 years, I guess, in their other location, pretty close. And I've had my office by there. I've lived adjacent to it, and while my neighborhood wasn't directly affected by traffic because somebody took the desire to close off the streets and made it worse anyway, but the business itself was always well-kept, well-maintained. I've never seen cars backed up to get in and out of it. And they have roughly a similar-sized building and facility and less parking. So I think it can be compatible with the neighbors. Now, I realize that there's neighbors here that may not like the use whatsoever, and that's something that we have to deal with, is it, does it meet our land use code? But on the other side, I think you have an applicant here, and I know Ms. Lazovich, and I know Chi Chi and some of the neighbors that live around there, and it's a tough call, but it is in a, this is an appropriate corner. We're not talking about a liquor store. We're not talking about a school that has major traffic every day. We're talking about something that has limited services and a much, typically a much more respectable point in our lives when family and friends visit a funeral home or the chapel for those services. And it's not like a church where you'll see traffic going through the neighborhood internet every day of the week. So I couldn't pick a better location for it, but I know that isn't what the neighbors want to, because they have concerns. You guys have concerns about traffic. You have concerns about the use in general and what actually goes on in there. I think the applicant's done, made a strong effort in setting up one meeting. I would see that there's a commitment to hold additional meetings. My view is, this is something that we should follow staff's recommendation for approval, but I'm willing to put additional conditions on it that address additional meetings with the neighbors, because there's a lot of you here tonight, and you deserve answers that, quite honestly, are important to you, but we, they may not be part of what we can address. I can tell you, does it have appropriate handicap parking? Yes. Are the driveways appropriate? Does it circulate well? Does it meet our parking codes? Is it architecturally compatible with the neighborhood? All of those things are proper, but what time their services? I don't, funeral services typically happen in the middle of the afternoon, at least the ones I go to. So I would hope that this would meet the commission's approval to go forward with the limitations of requiring meetings, additional meetings with the neighborhoods to address their concerns. And I would think at the end of the day, there's probably a common ground that everybody can find a workable solution. This isn't the kind of use where we have to sit up here and go, you like it, you don't like it, it's a mess, and we know it's going to have an impact. This one, I think, fits where it's sitting, and it's an appropriate building for it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I guess it leaves me for my comments. The project itself is a fairly decent location, and I've heard quite a few arguments tonight. One of them has to be an increase in traffic. I will say this, I don't think traffic is a factor whatsoever. I've heard about parking. I do think parking is an issue. If you look at the parking plan, there are quite a few, but there is a very meritorious argument about parking along Del Ray. And again, I know, I know that the applicant doesn't want people parking there, and somebody will always manage to do what they're not supposed to do. And I've looked at this, and I've thought about it, and really what it boils down to me is who is this going to affect the greatest? And we've been a commission that has listened to the neighbors repeatedly. In my time on the commission, I've seen people come forward en masse and have been able to have their voice heard on a project such as this. And Ms. Lazovich, you know, I know you're always good about, you know, trying to work with the neighbors and everything, but for some reason, the group that's affected the most to the west, for some reason, has not been heard on this. And I think I'm going to have to echo Commissioner Goines's, his thing on this or his comments. And I would prefer that this be held in abeyance for 30 days to allow a meeting to take place. I know we can make the argument that we can put it as a condition to have a meeting before it goes to city council, but I'm going to probably have to side a little bit with Mr. Bangochia on this, and I know he's speaking for several of the neighbors back there, that, and just as, just for point of disclosure, as Mr. Trusdale mentioned, I know everybody that's involved in this as well. And so, but in any event, I don't think 30 days is unreasonable to try to get the input and try to rectify those problems, because I think everybody that's involved in this are reasonable people, and I think a reasonable solution could be had on this. And I apologize greatly if this does get obeyed for 30 days to any inconvenience to the applicant, but I would prefer that the folks that have been there for 20 years to the west have a little say on what's going on adjacent to their neighborhood. Mr. Commissioner Sloman, you're the one who hasn't been heard from, if you want to join in.
Sure. Well, I mean, I've heard of traffic issues and emergency service issues, and I think if there's a procession with 100 vehicles, that if ambulance come down, the traffic would break pretty quickly. So I, and with the abundance of parking spaces, I don't have as big of a concern with this use and with this use on this particular location. Talking about affecting property values, we don't necessarily look at property values. I don't know if it's people's fear of just being close to a funeral home with dead people or what the truth behind all this is, but considering that it was on the one motion, one vote, and it seems to meet Title 19, I would personally like to see us take action on it tonight and then send it up to city council and have Jennifer Lazovich meet with the neighbors and hold one or two more meetings, whatever it takes, since city council is going to be ultimately voting on this and making the final decision. I don't see the need of holding it here for another 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion, just in just a couple of comments. It, you know, I know it's a use, it's on the one motion, one vote, but you got to keep in mind, it is a special use. So it's not that we just give these approvals out, that this is a special use. And so, but again, I think residents should have the opportunity, and I support it here, you know? I don't even know if the residents would agree to even trying to petition to have no parking on the north side of Del Ray up to Roseanne. I don't know, but those are some of the issues that need to be discussed in the meeting, and it needs to be to a point where it doesn't pain a perception to the neighbors, as one of the neighbors said. If it gets approved tonight, and then you call a neighborhood meeting, and a neighbor says, well, it's already been approved at planning, it's no need for me to come to the meeting, it's a done deal, then that reverberates to others, and you don't have the full participation at the neighborhood meeting. And so I think it should be vetted at the neighborhood meeting at its initial stage of nonapproval on it. And with that, I'll make a motion to hold the item for 30 days.
Okay, motion to obey for 30 days fails. I'll entertain another motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval with the added condition that Ms. Lazovich will get the names of all the people here and get with Mr. Banglicia and set up one or more neighborhood meetings between now and council to address individual concerns. I think this way, we do our job on the land use side, and it can move forward to the council to do the rest of the process that it goes through.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Before we vote, you accept that additional condition?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, can we clarify, as part of a condition to have a neighborhood meeting, I think the applicant's agreed to do that, but to make it a formal condition, the special use permit conditions live forever if approved, as the use exists. So I'm not sure how to address that as a formal condition of approval versus the applicant agreeing to meet with the neighbors prior. And if the applicant doesn't, we'll, of course, as staff, let everybody know that they failed to do so.
Okay. If the applicant can work with the neighbors here and staff, I guarantee you, Ms. Lazovich has never failed to meet any commitment she's made to this commission, so we'll just move for approval, subject to staff's conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item number 10, carries.
Mr. Chairman, that will go to city council on October 15th, 2014.
Okay, moving on now to the other public hearing items, beginning with item number 16, which is GPA 552A1. The applicant owner is NV Energy for possible action on a request to relocate electrical transmission lines generally along Martin L. King Boulevard north of Alta Drive, Desert Lane between Alta Drive and Hastings Avenue, and east of Interstate 15, north and south of Charleston Boulevard and Wards 1, 3, and 5 for Councilwoman Tarkanian, Councilman Coffin, and Barlow. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to relocate the existing electrical transmission facilities that are in conflict with the approved Project NEON Traffic Facility Improvement project located within the southeast sector of the city. The 230, 138, and 69 kilovolt transmission line circuits and fiber would be carried between poles measuring 140 feet in height along the new route. The new route begins at its point of deviation from the existing route on the west side of Martin Luther King Boulevard north of Alta. A new transmission pole would be installed at this location. The lines would then run southwards, crossing Martin Luther King Boulevard twice to appoint the northwest corner of Alta Drive and Martin Luther King Boulevard. From there, the route would turn westward to Desert Lane, proceed south along the east side of Desert Lane to Hastings Avenue, heading eastward along Hastings Avenue and crossing Interstate 15 near the northbound ramp from Grand Central Parkway. Now, on the east side of the freeway, the proposed route would progress southward across Charleston Boulevard, then southeast to connect to an existing power, or existing pole west of Commerce Street at California Avenue. This is not a general plan land use designation or zoning designation, but this would become part of our utility plan. The proposed route minimally affects neighborhoods without a significant deviating from the existing route, and staff does recommend approval.
And, Mr. Chairman? Oh, there you are. Just remember, it's GPA, state law would require a vote of five to pass.
Thank you. Can we hear it from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Scott Rudy, 7115 Amigo Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89119. Also with me is Edgar Patino from NV Energy. We are requesting a general plan amendment to relocate an existing line that is in conflict with Project NEON. Staff has recommended approval. We would request your approval. We're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners or a motion. Commissioner Trusdale.
For staff, and I was looking at some, my eyes are not as good as they once were on these small maps, is blue the proposed alignment or is red?
The blue is the current alignment, and the red would be the new alignment.
Okay. So for the, through you, Mr. Chairman, for the applicant, isn't it cheaper to run these things in relatively straight lines rather than?
I believe that would be true. This is the right-of-way and grant easements that they've obtained from the property owners. So they've been working for quite some time to make compromises and work with the neighbors and property owners to make this alignment work for all those involved.
I'm going to support your application, because these are not easy things to get through the system and all of that, but it, I've looked at drawings of the, you know, the lighting project of Project NEON or the potential pedestrian court, and it appears that your line passing over Charleston would be right in the middle of that. And I think if that artwork or that element comes to pass, which none of us know, it would be an impact on that visually, and that's all I try to look at, but I will support your application, because I, like I say, these are not easy to run through the application, you know, process.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else wish to be heard on this? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Trusdale.
Mr. Chairman, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, item number 16, carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go to city council on October 15th, 2014.
Thank you. Now, moving on now to related items, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21, beginning with item number 17 is MOD 55204. The applicant owner is Swecker and Liptinea Azure LLC for possible action on a request for a major modification to the Town Center Development Standards land use map from suburban mixed use SX-TC to general commercial GCTC on 2.33 acres on the south side of Azure Drive, approximately 330 feet west of Tenea Way, in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 18 is VAR 55205 for possible action on a request for a variance to allow 74 parking spaces where 82 parking spaces are required. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 19, SUP 55202 for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 6,500-square-foot liquor establishment tavern with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from an existing school where 400 feet is required. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 20, SUP 55203 for possible action on a request for a special use permit for 6,500-square-foot gaming establishment, restricted use with a for 6,500-square-foot gaming establishment, restricted use with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a single-family detached dwelling where 330 feet is required. Staff is recommending denial. Final related item is item number 21, which is SDR 55201 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a 6,500-square-foot liquor establishment tavern. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the requested major modification would not match the land use designation of the adjacent parcels within this existing commercial subdivision. This practice meets the Title 1918 definition for spot zoning, which is described as rezoning of a lot or parcel of land to benefit an owner of, for a use incompatible with surrounding land uses, and does not further the general plan. In regards to the variance for parking, staff finds this to be a self-imposed hardship as the subject parcel has approximately 1.25 acres of additional vacant space on the western perimeter of the parcel, which provides ample space for the applicant to provide the required amount of parking for the proposed use. Staff also finds the request for gaming and liquor not to be compatible or harmonious with the surrounding protected uses, as evidenced by their requested waivers. Finally, staff recommends denial of the site plan as it is relying upon the other related applications in order to function. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening. Can we hear it from the applicant?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Chris Kemfer, 8345 West Sunset, here on behalf of the owner and the applicant. When you hear this and you hear staff's comments, you've got to think to yourself, what crazy guy is filing an application like this? But there is a story, and as Paul Harvey always would say, now for the rest of the story. Before this application was even filed, we held a neighborhood meeting to see if there were any neighbors out there who would express concern over what is a remedies or what's called a distill. It's the same owner-operator. It is a restaurant, a full restaurant, and I have a menu I'm going to show you shortly, that does have a tavern and a gaming, non-restricted gaming component, or a restricted gaming component to it. After we had this neighborhood meeting with no opposition, we then filed the application. We had another neighborhood meeting, and I think staff would acknowledge that in the report, they don't really mean to say what they said. When they say the meeting was attended by one staff member, there were four members of the public at the meeting who did raise any major concerns to, they mean did not. There was no one there who was in opposition to it. In fact, we had a couple of people who were supportive of it because it provides another food outlet for people in that area. So we received no, and I understand that there's been protests that have been subsequently filed and approvals subsequently filed. Let me show you where we are and why we think this is appropriate. I don't know if this is going to work the way I want it to work. I don't think so. I'll speak up so loudly enough for everyone to hear. This is the location of the site now. This is Tenaya, and this is Azure. It is located right here. There is an existing AMPM market right here. On this property right here is a discount tire operation, and there is a sign on this particular site, and again, I can't see, but you can, that says, "Coming Soon Leaves Discount Liquor." And here is the discount tire sign. So what we have, and if I can show you now, this is exactly across the street. This is the city sign here advertising the use. This is what is exactly across the street from us, and obviously, commercial center. There's timbers located in there. It's, so it clearly is a commercial area, and we felt that this particular use, which as I say, and I have a picture of the remedies, that would be appropriate at that location. Now, I want to talk to you about a couple of the waivers that are being requested because if you were to read that they're asking from zero setback from a school, it would seem as if what was being said is after the kids had playtime, they could pop in and get a beer. And the reality is, here's the way that this is configured, and I think you can see it here. This is called Monocent Cito East here. This is called Tenaya Village, this section here. And staff, please correct me if I'm wrong because you're the experts, but the, when they have a joint boundary, as they do here, you measure from here essentially to here. It's not that you measure the distance where the proposed use is and where the school is because that distance is over 1,500 feet. And I can only assume that the school they're talking about is this new campus opening this fall for Quest Preparatory School or Academy, which is located in this building here, right adjacent to this. And if you can see, that's the discount tire sign. So you get the idea of exactly how far this school is away from that proposed use. Now, with regard to the other use, which is, or the other waiver, which says zero separation from a home where 330 is required, here's what we're talking about. There are some homes here in the county. This is a residence here, a vacant lot here. There's another home here right behind where the AMPM is. But the distance between the back of the building and the wall here is over 150 feet. So when you read zero setback from this establishment to a school and zero setback from this establishment to a home, obviously, if you measure from a property line, or on the other case, if you measure from that property line, the answer is yes, well, that's accurate. However, practically, we are talking about distances that are more than appropriate. Again, we had two neighborhood meetings. No one came out in opposition. Several at the meeting expressed support. And to address any concerns about what type of establishment it is, this is not a bar that has bar food. It has all of these appetizers, sliders, salads, soup. Then it has wraps and sandwiches, all kinds of pizzas. It has burgers, and then entree plates from chicken breast, New York steak, to roasted bourbon barbecue chicken, and then that has a separate breakfast menu. It is clearly a restaurant that has a tavern operation to it. We think it's appropriate. The neighbors that we spoke with and who attended our meeting obviously did, and we tried to do everything we could by having the neighborhood meeting. And if we came out and there were neighbors of any significance in opposition, we would have walked away, but there were not, and we'd respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemfer. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Good evening, sir. If you could state your name and address, please?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. My name is Angelo Casaro, and my address is 4327 West Sunset, and I'm here in opposition to the applicant, the agenda items number 17 through 21. We concur with staff's recommendation for denial. Myself is the owner, and my partner, Nick Montana, we're the owners of the Town Center Lounges, and we're within a couple of city blocks of this proposed operation. And we don't, we haven't heard any justification or any hardship as to why any of these motions or any of these applications should be approved. And as regard to gaming taverns, there are several other existing locations for the neighbors to frequent and go and gamble and drink and eat. And, Mr. Kemfer, certainly it is a restaurant, but it is bar food, the same as every place else out there. There's timbers within just, you know, seconds across the street. There's a Town Center Lounge. There's the Montana Meats. The Road Runner, very successful operation, is now closed down also just a couple of blocks away from here. We don't, we don't see any reason or any real hardship as to why it should be approved, and therefore, we concur with staff's recommendation for denial.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few brief comments. I understand staff's issues with regard to compatibility. I think one way to cure that is with the major modification, and we certainly make it compatible with some of the surrounding uses, including those that have been mentioned by the gentleman that just spoke. I was one who had that knee-jerk reaction specifically with regard to items 19 and 20 on the SUPs. When I saw the zero-foot separation, I too was concerned, but I think the applicant has explained that well. When we understand how those measurements are taken and considering that common boundary, I don't have the concerns that I did initially. So having said all of that, I'm in support of items 17 through 21, and you'll see my support tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman, through you, just disclosed, I met with the applicant to review this because I had the same knee-jerk reaction that, what the heck's going on here? But after seeing a lot of these things, a lot of my concerns were calm. Everything that he said today was the same thing that he disclosed to me when he met with me, but I thought you showed me pictures of the residential lots were actually being used for commercial. Is that correct? Do you have those pictures with you? And maybe I got it wrong.
No, no, you have it right. I was... The only reason I didn't show these is I was at, in attendance at a city council hearing one time, and somebody showed pictures of somebody's home, and a lady stood up and said she had lost her husband in Vietnam and her son had died of cancer. She didn't have the ability to maintain him. And I always remembered that because this person said, this person can't keep their homes up. So for my own personal preference, I just never show others publicly. But you asked the question, and it's a very fair question, Commissioner. It is being used for, these are the homes that are behind us, and they are being used for commercial purposes. That's the vacant lot, and then those are the homes that are behind us. I don't know if that's commercial or he just likes to store cars in the storage bin. These are county folks. Now, candidly, and you and I had this discussion, and we agreed that these are people who just say, this is my half-acre lot. I'm going to do with my half-acre lot what I want to do with it. I don't bother you, and please don't bother me. And so, but the reality is, we're not talking about a zero setback from what would be viewed as a traditional residential development. Thank you.
Chairman, I was worried about a buffer zone between residential and this commercial, but I think as soon as I seen those pictures, I don't think that that buffer zone is really needed.
I understand.
No further comments.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you. Starting with item 17, MOD 55204, the motion is for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve, item 17 carries.
Related item 18, VAR 55205, motion is also for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve, item 18 carries.
Item 19, SUP 55202, motion is for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Item to, excuse me, motion to approve, item number 19 carries.
Item 20, SUP 55203, move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion to approve, item number 20 carries.
And finally, item 21, SDR 55201, motion is for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Motion to approve, item number 21 carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, items 17 through 21 will move on to the city council meeting on October 15th, 2014.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Okay, we're going to go on now to related items, number 22 through 32, and I'm going to go ahead and read all of them together, beginning with item number 22, which is VAR 54991. The applicant is D.R. Horton. The owner is Valencia A. 13,004 Investors LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required on proposed Lot 1 on a portion of 2.91 acres on the east side of Buffalo Drive, approximately 230 feet north of Oaky Boulevard in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 23 is VAR 54992 for possible action on request for a variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required on proposed Lot 2. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 24, VAR 54993 for possible action on request for a variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required on proposed Lot 3. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 25, VAR 54994 for possible action on request for a variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required on proposed Lot 4. Staff is recommending denial. Item number 26, VAR 54995 for possible action on request for a variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required on proposed Lot 5. Staff is recommending denial. Related item 27 is VAR 54996 for possible action on request for a variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required on proposed Lot 6. Staff is recommending denial. Item number 28 is VAR 54997 for possible action on request for a variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required on proposed Lot 7. Staff is recommending denial. Item number 29 is VAR 54998 for possible action on request for a variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required on proposed Lot 8. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 30 is VAR 54999 for possible action on request for a variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required on proposed Lot 9. Staff is recommending denial. Related item number 31 is VAR 55000 for possible action on request for a variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required on proposed Lot 10. Staff is recommending denial. Final related item number 32 is VAR 55001 for possible action on request for a variance to allow a a variance to allow a ten-foot front yard setback where twenty feet is required on proposed Lot Eleven. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, substantial evidence has not been presented to warrant the requested variances. A redesign of the homes could be done to meet required setbacks. As such, the hardship... This hardship is self-imposed, and therefore, staff recommends denial of all eleven variances requested here today. Please note, we have received additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Jennifer Lazovich, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road, here tonight on behalf of D.R. Horton. We have before you an eleven-lot residential subdivision, and as the code requires, we have to apply for a variance for each of those lots, which is why the chairman just spent five minutes reading in every single one of those items. My comments will be the same on all of them, which is to say that we are asking for a ten-foot front setback where twenty feet is otherwise required. One of the types of models that D.R. Horton would like to build here, they will have two different types of models, but one of them has a turned third-car garage. So, you have two... A two-car garage as you drive down the street, and you can see it, and turn to the side would be your third-car garage. And so, to give us that flexibility, we don't know where those lots will be with that type of model. We would like to ask for this variance on all of those front yard setbacks. We would be similar in terms of the front yard setbacks that are existing today on the Blue Heron Development immediately to the north of us. And I would like to think I had a little better success with this neighborhood meeting than I did on the last one. We did do a voluntary neighborhood meeting, and when we explained to the neighbors what we were asking, I think the meeting was over. Doug was there, maybe in ten minutes. And I would hope that we got the word out so that everybody understood this was internal to us. Certainly, the neighbors that were at that meeting expressed to us that they didn't have any concerns with this variance request, so we'd ask for your approval.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman, through you. I would have an issue with it if it was in Summerland or Town Center or some big area, master-planned community where we were jumping from a ten-foot to a fifteen-foot to a twenty-foot front yard setback. I think this is isolated. It's a small, eleven-lot community. It's not affecting the neighbors. It's only affecting the people that are in that community. It's a gated community. And, you know, I don't see how this has an impact on anyone other than the people that are in there. And for those reasons, I don't see any reason why I couldn't support this item.
Any other commissioners wish to be heard? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman, for the items that I just...
Excuse me, Commissioner Sloman.
Excuse me, Chairman. Unfortunately, we're going to have to go ahead and just take a vote on each of these individually.
Yeah, we were planning, and we're going to go right down the line here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Chairman, which item are we starting on? Twenty-two?
Item twenty-two, Commissioner Sloman.
On item twenty-two, VAR 54991, for the reasons that mentioned in my testimony, I would make... Move to approve, subject to staff's recommendation or conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number twenty-two carries.
Yes, Chairman, on item twenty-three, VAR 54992, I would move to approve based on the testimony today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item twenty-three carries.
Chairman, on item twenty-four, VAR 54993, I would move to approve based on testimony stated today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number twenty-four carries.
Yes, Chairman, on item twenty-five, VAR 54994, I would move to approve based on testimony heard today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item twenty-five carries.
Chairman, on item twenty-six, VAR 54995, I'd move to approve based on testimony made today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item twenty-six carries.
Chairman, item twenty-seven, VAR 54996, I'd move to approve based on testimony heard today.
Thank you. Motion to approve item twenty-seven carries.
Chairman, on item twenty-eight, VAR 54997, I would move to approve based on the testimony heard today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item twenty-eight carries.
Mr. Chairman, item twenty-nine, VAR 54998, I'd move to approve based on testimony heard today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number twenty-nine carries.
Mr. Chairman, item thirty, VAR 54999, I'd move to approve based on testimony heard today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item thirty carries.
Mr. Chairman, item thirty-one, VAR 55000, I'd move to approve based on testimony heard today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item thirty-one carries.
Mr. Chairman, item thirty-two, VAR 55001, move to approve based on testimony heard today.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we're done with motion to approve item number thirty-two carries.
Mr. Chairman, items twenty-two through thirty-two are final action. Let's appeal to the city clerk's office within ten days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Item number thirty-three is VAR 55335. The applicant is City of Las Vegas. The owner is Proview Series Seventeen LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a zero-foot sign setback where five feet is required, and to allow two freestanding signs to be located within the downtown casino overlay special signage district where such is not allowed on 0.85 acres at 200 South Las Vegas Boulevard and 201 South Fourth Street in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending denial. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting approval of four signs advertising public parking to be located around the perimeter of a temporary municipal parking lot. Two of the four signs are proposed to face Carson Avenue, one is proposed to face Fourth Street, and one would face Las Vegas Boulevard. Proposed signage is expected to be in place until the current lease expires in approximately a year and a half. The Downtown Design Review Committee denied the sign design review on August nineteenth. As the signs displaying the proposed information could be designed as incidental signs, meeting the required setbacks, staff finds the applicant's hardship to be preferential in nature and recommends denial. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Brandy Stanley, Parking Services Manager, City of Las Vegas. These two parcels are owned by a third party, and the City of Las Vegas leases and operates and has a fiduciary duty to maximize the revenue on behalf of the owner per the terms of our lease. This parking lot, which is actually two with an alley in between, was put in place once the Planning Commission or the Planning Department passed the temporary parking lot standards for the Centennial Plant. This is allowed to be a parking lot for a maximum of three years, and we have exhausted our temporary sign permits. Currently, we have a number of banners on the Centennial Fence surrounding, which is not ideal. However, once the extension for the temporary signage expires, we have very few options for making it apparent to people that are looking for a place to park that it is indeed a parking lot. Incidental signage is relatively small and not very visible. As you can imagine, with less than two years left on the life of this property, putting up... Running electricity to the site and putting up illumination and illuminated signs and neon signs on... In these districts is rather cost prohibitive, especially if you're only going to actually have it up for a year to a year and a half. So, we recognize that there's a little bit of a disconnect between the length of time a temporary parking lot is allowed to exist and the length of time a temporary sign is allowed to exist, which is why we're asking for this variance. Our lease expires on the third-year anniversary of this lot, and at that point in time, the signs would be taken down unless something else happens.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Saying none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I also sit on DDRC. We heard this come before us. And if I wasn't mistaken, the applicant or somebody stated that the signs that were planted directly onto the fence were going to be freestanding and set back. And I think you or somebody agreed to that. Is that still the case or not?
The signs will be freestanding, mostly because the fence is not capable of supporting a sign of any size. We did not want to attach it to the fence. We are requesting a variance on the setback because if we were going to set it back, we would lose over ten percent of the parking inventory in the lot.
And, Mr. Chairman, through you, how many total parking spaces are on this lot?
There are approximately 111. And if we were to comply with the five-foot setback, we would lose about 12.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Yes. And also, we heard this, I sit on the Downtown Design Review. One of the big issues with this that is hard to get past, and we discussed this with Stanley, is it fronts into the scenic byway, and that creates... Would create a waiver that we have not granted other individuals along that corridor. So, that creates a dilemma for me inasmuch as, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gant... I mean, we have these standards which we should live by ourselves. I've been out there and looked at this at length, and throw this out as a solution, a If you deleted A and B and put your signs C and D up, I think you'd get the visibility that you would want. And I think there's a good argument that we haven't granted the city something that would impact directly on the scenic byway for that year and a half period. That's something that I would support as a solution on this lot, because I do agree it's costly, but I... On the other side, I'm in the same boat when the city sends me an email saying, "It's only $100 for another application, but you're going to love it." So, it's just... I think that's a way to at least try to approach this if the rest of the commission would look that way.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I've been thinking about that as well, because my beef really hasn't been over C and D. It's more been on A and B, being right on the Boulevard and the main thoroughfare of our Las Vegas scenic byway in that overlay district. And so, I think I could support something along those lines as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Me personally, my thoughts on this, I'm not sure I can support this at all, because, again, we're trying to maintain standards down in that area. And here we are, the City of Las Vegas, looking for a variance from our own standards. It would make it difficult to impose standards on other applicants unrelated to the city, so I can't support this. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Let me ask one more question, staff. Is there a way to grant something for a certain amount of time? Because I guess the problem here is it's public parking. We keep hearing that it's a temporary parking lot. It's only going to be there for another year and a half, and we hear this all the time. And however, they did a great job with that parking lot, and they put up the Centennial Fence, and I feel that this is more than just a temporary parking lot. And I'm curious, is there any other way that we can go about this, granting approval up until the time that the temporary lot expires?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Well, I'll tell you what. Our code does permit the Planning Commission to approve variances with conditions. So, our code would permit you to place reasonable conditions on this application if you chose to do so. Time limitation has a nexus to this approval and would be appropriate if you chose to do so. It's within your discretion to add reasonable conditions onto a variance application.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as a point of order, as a temporary parking lot, it can seek an additional time to be a permanent parking lot. So, would the variance then go away or have to come back if it was limited? Because they can't... The owner could seek, and it's not the city that owns it, the owner could seek an additional three years of temporary, and then after that three years, if granted, could seek permanent status as a parking lot through a site plan review. So, the parking lot could become permanent forever.
Sure. And, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to add to my comments, yeah, it would seem to me that if you had a two-year limitation on these signs, then the owner at that time would either have to take the signs down or come back based upon the limitation. But I do... I do... Let's see Doug's... Why he's raising the practical issue. But yes, again, in two years, whatever time limit you put on, the owner at that time, whether it's the City of Las Vegas or if it's a private owner, would have to take those signs down or come back for another variance.
Thank you. Commissioner Sloman, are you ready to make a motion?
No, I'm not. The problem is, if it's a temporary parking lot, then it's a temporary parking lot. If this thing moves to a permanent parking lot in a year and a half, then they probably should come back to DDRC with a permanent sign, because that was the... That was the whole argument in front of DDRC, was it's only going to be there for another year and a half. And so, no matter what goes there, there'll always be a sign that we're approving. So, if there's a mechanism to allow us to have this just for the next year and a half, and if they decide they want to push it out further or renew that parking lot, then they need to come back through the whole entitlement process.
And unfortunately, I did try this. I came here with the intent to try and come up with something that works, but if this is a temporary sign solution, it wouldn't come back to DDRC, it wouldn't come back to Planning, it would go directly to council under a review of condition, and the council has all the ability and authority to make their decisions any way they can. But their backbone when it comes to signs is kind of limited. It'll come back to haunt me, but I... So, I guess I would follow staff's recommendations for denial and make the motion that way.
That's going to be the motion, then?
Yes.
Okay. Please vote. Note that a yes vote is for denial. Motion for denial carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, this will go to city council at the October fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen meeting.
Going on now to related items thirty-four and thirty-five, beginning with item number thirty-four, which is SUP 55031. The applicant owner is CCOB Family Trust for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a private school primary use at 5705 North Rainbow Boulevard in Ward Six, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff is recommending approval. On item, related item number 35 is SDR 55043 for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed three-building, 8,044-square-foot private school, primary with waivers to allow a two-foot-wide landscape buffer on a portion of the south side of the property where eight feet is required, and a zero-foot-wide landscape buffer on the east side of the property where 15 feet is required. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting to convert an existing single-family dwelling with a casita into a public or private school primary use for a private school at 5705 North Rainbow Boulevard. The property is currently vacant and in disrepair. The applicant is proposing to remodel the existing structures for use as a tomb room, private school, with space to grow in the future. Exterior walls will be painted using a similar color palette as the current color in order to keep with the aesthetic of the residential neighborhood, as well as a circular driveway will be installed that will function as a drop-off and pickup area for the school. A waiver and an exception are required for perimeter landscape buffers and trees, but the overall impact to the site is minimal. Staff recommends approval of the applications with conditions. If denied, the property cannot be used as a school. Please note, additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicants, please?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Yi Hong Liu. I'm a representative of the owner.
Excuse me, I'm going to need your address as well.
Oh, yeah, it's 1669 Horizon Ridge Parkway, Suite 120, and the project we're looking at is a small private school, and we're anticipating 50 students for the school, and, you know, the building, there's three buildings on the site. Only the single, only the ground floor of the main building is going to be used for the school. The remaining square footage is going to be the future expansion, you know, when the school getting, you know, bigger scale. So, right now, what you can see is the school is a residential project, and we're going to convert it to a school with the, meeting all the handicap requirements. We provided a drive-up and drop-off and pickup space in front of the school area, and then we provided 10 parking spaces for the school with one handicap parking space, and, you know, we have all the trees along the perimeter of the property, and then we provided the playground for the kids. Staff recommended approval, and hopefully you can feel the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? May I please come up and state your name and address?
Jennifer Schroedt, 5695 North Rainbow Boulevard, Las Vegas, 89130. I am the private school directly next to this private school. I don't really understand the need for another private school next to a private school. As Commissioner Truesdale, if I got that name correct, made a comment with the funeral home that schools provide major traffic. I already provide spaces for 150 clients in my facility. We have the same exact drop-off and pickup times. You're going to impact the traffic right there on Rainbow with another 50 clients. Rainbow is also a gateway road to Joseph Neal Elementary School. Many people come down Rainbow and turn on Azure to go to the public school. Can't tell you how many come down Rainbow for that entrance, but I can tell you I have 150 clients that need to turn right into my building prior to their private school. I also, the exit that they're proposing for their private school is 15 feet from my entrance of my private school. I don't think this is a good traffic flow when parents are coming both directions, all lining up on Rainbow. There's only one turn lane on Rainbow. Everybody has to queue up in the same line to get into their school and behind them, my school. Because again, I don't understand the need for another private school next to a private school. I didn't hear of any public neighborhood meetings for this project at all. I didn't attend any. I don't know if any of my neighbors attended any. This is also a residential street. I am the only use permit on the street. Everything south of me, I mean, sorry, north of me is residential, including the lot they're proposing. Across on the east side is all residential. There's no commercial, there's no use permits that I'm aware of. Again, schools bring major traffic, and you're just asking for more traffic next to an existing site.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to be heard on this? Sir, come on up and state your name and address, please.
My name is Rich Leeavitt. Address 5909 Kane Holly Street. I am a retired senior constructionist road inspector, and after looking at this situation, if the city of Las Vegas, Nevada has the ultimate right-of-way that is required for Rainbow Boulevard, I believe that it'd be the best interest of the city to have the ultimate sidewalk, curb, gutter, and road place. At certain times of the day, there's going to be a lot of vehicles ingressing and egressing the property. The northbound section of Rainbow Boulevard could handle the left turn into the property because the painted center island can be used as a left-turn pocket and vehicle storage. The southbound Rainbow is a different situation, as there is no right-turn storage for the property, and this school would be used in the public property as a right-turn vehicle storage for patrons to the school to drop off their children, which would become a single-lane bottleneck for the southbound Rainbow Boulevard traffic. The block walls in the public right-of-way should be removed to create a site distance for the existing vehicles. The ingressing vehicles can get on dry, which should be 24 feet wide with three-foot X's on each side of the driveway entrance. So that the ingressing vehicles can be used to get into the property, I suggest the owners put a 24-foot-wide paved road into the school so the parents can drop off their kids quickly and leave the property at the egress driveway. There should be a right-turn-only sign due to the fact that the northbound left-turn storage lane would block the left-turn egress vehicle from going north and creating a road block. The section between the north ingress driveway and the south egress driveway should have signs placed, no parking or stopping between signs. If the vehicles are parked there, it would create a site distance problem. There is currently a speed limit on Rainbow Boulevard between Anne Road and Tropical of 25 miles per hour. There are a lot of violations of the speed limit zone. The city should place larger signs so the public could be more aware of the speed limit.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members wish to be heard? Seeing none, sorry. What's that?
I just wanted to turn you some ideas.
Oh, please bring those up and put them in the record. Thank you.
You can just state my name.
No, you can just hand those to the staff. Thank you. Any other members wish to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commission. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Jennifer, could I ask you just to approach the mic and say what it is that you handed to the clerk, please?
I'm sorry, those are signatures in opposition of both SUP 55031 and SDR 55043.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sorry it wasn't the clerk.
And just real quick, how many signatures are on there approximately?
There are 76, I believe, on there, and I just got those last night and this morning from my clients, but I'll have more at the City Council.
Are these folks that live in the area or are these folks that go to your school?
These are my clients at this time. I'll be canvassing the neighborhood for the rest for the council meeting if this goes through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chair, I do have a question for the applicant. Do you already have, is this a charter school?
No, this is a private school. This is serving the kids K to 5.
Can you tell me what type of approvals, if any, you have already?
Yes, we've been working with the State Department of Education and all of our...
Excuse me, I'm going to have to ask you to state your name and your address, please.
Sorry, Maggie Bray, 6955 North Durango.
Thank you.
Okay. The approvals that we already have are, we are a nonprofit entity, so we're a nonprofit private school already. We have, just without a location, we have the State Department of Education who's already approved all of our curriculum. We have, we've met with the fire department to make sure that our safety has gone through. We've met with the heads of the health district to make sure that we're compliant with all of their regulations and to make sure that we're doing everything to benefit the small group of children that we are going to represent for the community. And I also want to just point out that the rebuttal that was made, I want to respect all neighbors in every single way I can, and I want to work with everyone. This is supposed to be a good project for good families in Las Vegas and not cause any harm. So, any rebuttal with specifics as to what they need us to do, we will try to accommodate. I'm a parent with children, and this is what I feel is needed. We are not in competition with the private school that's already there. We service different grade levels than them.
Okay, thank you. And I may ask you to make good on that promise to work with them here in just a minute.
Absolutely.
If I can continue, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I do have a question for staff, and that is regarding the parking. So, what I've heard is there are 10 spaces, and yet they're planning on 50 students with extensions coming, and maybe staff can tell me what they've looked at by way of parking and whether that's adequate?
Just one, one moment, I'm just loading up the parking table so I can give you a clear answer. Schools are based upon classrooms, the number of classrooms, and in a second, let me scroll through, get the exact numbers for you. So, in this particular, the parking ratio is three spaces per classroom. They're only proposing two classrooms, so you get a maximum of six regular parking spaces or six parking spaces in total, with one of those being required to be handicap, and then being provided as 10 on-site with one being handicap.
And is that with just Building A?
That is in relation to the Building A, yes, the current proposed building, and does not include any of the other structures on-site.
So, what happens if they expand and build Buildings B and C?
Upon review of the building permit, we would also be looking at the parking requirements, and if it was known at that point that a parking variance or additional parking was being provided, that would be assessed at that point.
Okay, all right. Just a few comments. I really appreciate your willingness to work with, you know, your neighbors, with some of the concerned citizens. I haven't had an opportunity to meet with you. I have a lot of questions about what you plan to do here. I checked with Councilman Ross's office, and I know there haven't been, he has not had that opportunity either, and when I hear from the next-door neighbor that there have been no neighborhood meetings, that, to me, invites this opportunity to meet with some people and share what it is you're doing. So, my recommendation, and what I'd like to see, is an abeyance for at least 30 days to give you that opportunity to have a neighborhood meeting and to meet with some of us who have questions about your project here. Would the applicant be willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay, and if we did a 30-day abeyance, staff, would that give them opportunity to get out proper notice?
Yes, we could get the notice out. We can do that for them for a fee, or they can request the labels from us, or they can do it on their own. There's three different ways they can opt for that, but if we do the full notice, we do need 15 days in order to get those out.
Okay. I'm not making the motion yet, because there may be other comments, but my motion will be for a 30-day abeyance to give some opportunities to meet with us as well as neighbors.
Mr. Chairman? I think what you're trying to do is admirable. It's a positive commitment to the community. I have concerns that the undertaking of converting the residential structure to meet all of the state's requirements, the city's requirements, the health district, you know, for schools and such, will be a, my concern is, you may not be able to reach all of that, so that's just a caution. I'll support holding this for 30 days, but I think when you come back, there'll be some of those kind of questions that we can talk about at that point as well.
With that, Mr. Chair, seeing no other comments, my motion on item 34 is to obey until the October Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please vote. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, that is true for both items 34 and 35, to obey until the October 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to obey items number 34 and 35 to the October 14, 2014 Planning Commission meeting carries. Thank you. Have a good night. Going on now to item number 36 is SUP 55236. The applicant owner is Target Corporation for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an accessory package liquor off-sale use with an existing 141,892-square-foot general retail establishment with a waiver to allow a 153-foot distance separation from a city park where 400 feet is required at 6480 Sky Point Drive in Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject item was noticed with a waiver from the minimum distance separation from a city park in error. As pursuant to the Unified Development Code, an establishment having more than 50,000 square feet of retail floor space is exempt from the minimum distance separation requirements. As such, the proposed use is in conformance with the minimum special use permit requirements and can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the existing and future surrounding land uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the application. Please note that an additional letter of protest has been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Nguyen of the law firm Colosseum Latham, 400 South Rampart, Suite 400. We represent the Target Corporation in this matter, and I just wanted to thank staff for reviewing the applicable exemption and recognizing its application in this case. We want to request approval, along with staff's recommendation to approve, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, this is similar to the item that we had on the one motion, one vote earlier, and if there's no objections, I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve, excuse me, motion to approve item number 36 carries.
Mr. Chairman, that is final action unless appealed within 10 days to the city clerk.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Item number 37 is SUP 55328. The applicant owner is Drach Third Street LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed tavern limited establishment for a 107,158-square-foot commercial recreation amusement outdoor use at 200 South Third Street in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a special use permit for a proposed outdoor tavern limited establishment to be utilized in conjunction with outdoor special events at 200 South Third Street. Site is located within the downtown Centennial Plain, Central Casino Core District and promotes the district goals for creating vitality and synergy in the area. The proposed use is appropriate for the site and can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval. If the application is denied, the liquor establishment tavern limited use would not be allowed at this location. Please note that additional electronic comments have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please? Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Lucy Stewart, 2500 West Sahara, representing the property owner and the applicant. And this is the site of the old courthouse, which has been removed and been created for a valet parking lot, and that's been leased to the D. But they've had, the property owners had several requests to have events here, so they've gotten temporary approval for, or approval for a stage and to have some events there. What they'd like to do is be able to serve alcohol to restricted, in a restricted area, and of course, to adults only. And that's what the request is before you. We thought we had done the right thing and have a meeting set up on Thursday with the priest, which is just across the street. But it's my understanding that it's the diocese that we should be meeting with, and so we've, and they're represented here. So, we've been having discussions in the audience, and so we're scheduling a meeting with them to, I think really just to talk about hours and make sure it doesn't disrupt any of their services. And so, we agree with all of staff's conditions, and we thank them for recommendation for approval, and we're working with Catholic churches.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the public wish to be heard on this? Sir, if you could state your name and address, please?
Ernie Frizzaro, 3981 Arbour Way, representing the Roman Catholic Diocese of Las Vegas. Met with Lucy. They have scheduled a meeting with Pastor on Thursday, but the assets are all the bishops, so they need to meet with the diocese also. We're going to try to schedule something next week. Want to go on public record as we are concerned about decibel levels, the time of events and the like, and it's a similar issue we had at the Shrine of the Most Holy Redeemer when Mandalay Group has their big facility next door. They worked with us. We're not against development. We're not against free enterprise, but we want to go on the record as having some concerns, and we'd like to meet with the developers.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir. If you could state your name and address, please?
My name is Michael Conway. My address is 315 South Casino Center Boulevard, which is rather close to this property. And I was knocked out of bed last week when they were testing the speakers. Now, when their event last Sunday, the volume was much more modified, and they made an effort to tone the volume down even on when mass was being said, and we were very happy to hear that. I had nothing to do with it. I just live there, okay? I work at another church. But I was concerned to see that this number 37 doesn't mention that it's right across the street from a church. And I don't know about the 400-foot limit for serving alcohol, but I don't know why the staff didn't mention that. And the decibel level, I don't know. You work for the diocese. I'm just a lowly peon, but I live there, so that's a concern of mine. And I don't like to see the church being ignored in developments that affect the atmosphere, more or less. So, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Ma'am, good evening. If you could state your name and address, please?
Good evening. Veronica Litback, 1306 South Third Street. I'm a parishioner of this church. We deal with the ambulances, the fire trucks, everything else during mass, and that is a concern, the noise factor. My husband and I also own property within three blocks of this, and we have tenants there who consistently complain about all the other noise that has now come to the neighborhood. So, that's a concern as well, but it's, I do understand that they have talked to the priest and that they're willing to have meetings. I will say that the people who are doing this are very communicative and willing to work with just about everybody in the neighborhood, and we certainly appreciate that. But I would like to hear more about hours of operation and, like the gentleman said, alcohol being served. I thought there was a distance separation from church and school as to alcohol. It seems that just about anybody going downtown now, if they have a venue, they get to serve alcohol. So, I realize this is Las Vegas, but there's a limit to everything. You know, I would like to have that addressed as well. So, just as a concerned parishioner and landowner in that area, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Mr. Sloman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just to address some of the comments, I think I'm correct when I'm saying this. The tavern limited was actually created for the downtown Centennial Plan, which is part of the downtown redevelopment area, and the tavern limiteds don't have a distant separation from other taverns or from a house of worship or those typical things. So, if it was a, if it was a urban lounge or if it was a tavern, then you would see those distant separations come into play. So, as far as the tavern limited goes, and being on this property, I think it's appropriate just due to the close proximity to Fremont Street. However, I do hear all three of these individuals who come out, and I would encourage you to work with them on the hours and make sure we're not blasting our music during their services. And Lucy's real good to work with. We've worked with her for a couple of years now, so encourage y'all to exchange numbers and try making sure that y'all can work everything out. Something to keep in mind is the Fremont East Entertainment District, which goes from Las Vegas Boulevard down to 8th Street and from Carson over to Stewart, doesn't have noise ordinance. However, my understanding is that little section of town does have a noise ordinance. So, if the noise becomes unbearable, you could always pick up the phone and call the police or whoever and have it shut down. So, something to keep in mind, and so you do have some protections there when it comes down to noise and when you're having your services.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Chairman, on item number 37, I would move to approve based on all staff's conditions of approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number 37, carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go to City Council on October 15, 2014.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 38, which is SDR 55324. The applicant owner is Harrison Properties Limited for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 11,708-square-foot commercial building with a waiver of the downtown Centennial Plan architectural design standards on 0.16 acres at 725, 729, and 731 South Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have the report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the waiver of the downtown Centennial Plan is for the architectural design standards, which require, so it could have contrasting colors and a rooftop and a non-continuous articulated roof line on the proposed building, which the downtown Centennial Plan doesn't envision. Staff can support the waivers as staff finds that it's architecturally functional and works in the appearance here. Staff has determined the proposed project is compatible with the surrounding development in the area. It does have access to Las Vegas Boulevard from one of the storefronts, thereby creating a sense of place, and staff is recommending approval. Please note, we have received additional letter support since protest, since publication.
Thank you. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. I'm Laura Dreya, 520 South Fourth Street, here on behalf of Harrison Properties, also known as Golden Silver Pawn Shop. To give you an idea of where we're talking about, Golden Silver Pawn Shop is right here, and this is an ancillary building to Golden Silver Pawn Shop. The Harrison's company owns four properties along the same block, including this parking lot, which is shared property, shared parking between the subject property and Golden Silver Pawn. You could see in the photos before you that rotated, that what exists now is a decrepit building that has a lot of add-ons. It's not quite cohesive, and the idea is to demolish that and come up with various smaller retail areas with an open promenade that is shaded by a tarp, so that people that typically stay in and around that area as pedestrians and sometimes wait in line to go and see Golden Silver Pawn Shop on the street will have a shaded area to wait in. And I worked closely with Public Works regarding the conditions of approval for dedication. I believe Mr. Pyatt has an additional condition to revise.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to amend condition number 14 and add a condition. I'd like to amend condition 14 to read, in accordance with code requirements of Title 13.56, remove all substandard public street improvements and unused driveway cuts, including all sidewalk ramps adjacent to the site, if any, and replace the new improvements meeting current city standards in parentheses, standard drawing 234, concurrent with development of this site. All existing paving damage removed by this development shall be restored at its original location and its original width concurrent with development of this site. The condition we'd like to add is to add a covenant, which states, prior to the approval of construction drawings for the site, sign a covenant running with land agreement for the possible future installation of any offsite improvements per requirements of the downtown Centennial Plan that are deferred by this action, including undergrounding of all existing overhead utility lines adjacent to the site, not placing underground with this development. The covenant agreement must be recorded with a county recorder, and a copy of the recorded document must be provided to the city prior to the issuance of building permit for this site.
Thank you. Do you accept that additional condition?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Sloman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I like the project. I think it looks good. I think staff got this one right, along with the waivers. And actually, I like the colored roofs versus just the plain white roofs. That'll look good if you're in one of the high-rises or one of the taller buildings around that neighborhood looking down on it, and the articulated roof line doesn't, one-size doesn't fit all, and it definitely doesn't fit modern architecture, and so I appreciate staff giving their recommendation of approval on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yes. So, we can head off any question, because it will come back the way I look at these plans. Where the roof-mounted air conditioner is going to be going?
I've talked to the construction company about that. They're actually beside each and every cubicle versus on top, so that they will be hidden from public view.
Okay, so they're in-mounted like a typical container would be?
As you can see, there's spaces in between each unit, and they would be side-mounted within the plaza, so that they're not visible from a public right-of-way on neighboring properties.
I just, we had beautiful plans like this on the other one, and then came back with all kinds of waivers that were an adventure, but it's interesting, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Goines?
Thank you. I concur with Commissioner Truesdale. Very innovative. Thanks for meeting with me yesterday, and I know my good friend, Commissioner Quinn, is not here tonight, but I know if she was, she would ask to take us through how a person with a disability and/or specifically with a wheelchair would maneuver throughout this lovely project.
This being the sidewalk of Las Vegas Boulevard, you can see from some of the photos that there's a break from the front. This is narrower here, wider down here. This little square here represents the ramp and the landing for a wheelchair to make its way into the interior, right there.
Great. Thank you.
I was prepared for that one.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
All right. And if you do need to add one or two handicap spaces, you have the ability to do that to meet the, all the requirements?
Yes.
Okay. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item 38, carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will go to City Council on October 15, 2014.
Thank you. We'll move on now to Director's Business, beginning with item number 40, which is TXT 51717. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas for discussion and possible action on a request to amend LVMC Chapter 19.12 regarding the utility transmission line and electric generating plant uses. Revisions include adding new language and an appeals process as required by the Nevada revised statute. Staff is recommending approval. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this is in response to Assembly Bill Number 239, which was adopted by the 2013 state legislature. The law clarifies that local entities' approval process for above-ground transmission lines of over 200 kilovolts and electrical generating plants. What this will do will clarify our code in regards to the type of application needed when locating these transmission lines and plants. Currently, our code states, as approved by the Planning Commission, but doesn't say what type of instrument is used, whether it's a general plan amendment, site plan review, a special use permit. This clarifies that it's a special use permit. This also clarifies that the state law now has changed that any appeal of the Planning Commission decision does not go to the City Council, but would then go to the Public Utilities Commission for the above-ground transmission lines. It also will allow us to establish the appeal process for any large generation plants of 10 megawatts or more. We don't anticipate too many of those be located within the city limits. Most of those will be located outside. And if there are any other questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you. Do any Members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, I'll open it up, I'll close the public hearing portion, open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Truesdale?
Yeah, for staff, solar's not a renewable energy source. We've taken solar out, but we leave nuclear fusion in?
I don't believe it does that. Solar would be part of the, but it's anything over 10 megawatts. It's large facilities. All of our small wind, small wind generating facilities that we have within the city and also our smaller solar plants would not be affected by this ordinance in its nature. And I think Director Perrigo could probably enlighten us to how big a 10-megawatt facility might be for solar.
Thank you. 10-megawatt facility is very big, probably about 60 to 80 acres of land.
Do we have an overlay approval area for a nuclear fusion plant? Because I'd certainly like to get in on that.
Any other comments from the Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for, to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item 40, carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be forwarded to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Our final item on the Director's Business is item number 42, which is TXT 55362. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas for discussion and possible action on a request to amend LVMC Chapter 19.18 related to definitions and measures to redefine the term "on-premise sign" and to provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendations. Staff, may we have a report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this amendment would clarify when goods or products are offered on a multi-tenant sign, particularly with changeable electronic displays, which often show advertisements from multiple vendors. In some instance, it could be difficult to determine which location the advertisement refers to, or even if it's sold on the same site as the sign. This would require that 50% coverage of that sign indicate This would require that fifty percent coverage of that sign indicate where onsite the product or service is sold or offered. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Do any Members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion, open up for discussion amongst the Commissioners. Commissioner Sloman?
Yes, Chairman, through you, question for staff. So does that mean on an LED reader board or something for multi-tenants, that fifty percent would be a logo of where it's sold, and the other fifty percent would be the good that they're selling? I'm a little confused.
Well, the example would be, for instance, if I was selling a, you know, Vegas Coke cola, Vegas Cola, on my LED sign, it would say Vegas Cola, and fifty percent of that would be the location, Vegas Cola available at store A, B, C.
Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale?
Oh, no, I, I'm good.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners have anything to say or any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item forty-two, TXT five-five-three-six-two, would move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner. Motion to approve item number forty-two carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will be forwarded to the City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Go to the last item of the evening, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Does anybody wish to be heard under this item? Seeing none, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting.